Okay, we can go ahead and get this work session started. First on the agenda is emergency services. And we have Mr. Shipley. If you would, give your name and title, please.
Yes, David Shipley. I'm the Director of Emergency Services for Wycomico County.
Okay. If you would, go ahead and highlight what you're looking for in the budget, and then when you're done, we'll ask questions.
Okay. The only new initiative in FY '22 is a major enhancement to the department's Communications Division with the creation of a 911 Specialist III Assistant Supervisor position. Currently, there's only one supervisor per division shift. There's no Assistant Supervisor.
Can you make your mask off?
I certainly can. I'm glad you asked, okay.
Hard to hear you.
All right.
Would you like me to start over again?
Yes.
Okay, all right. The only new initiative in FY '22 is a major enhancement to the department's Communications Division with the creation of 911 Specialist III Assistant Supervisor positions. Currently, there's only one supervisor per shift. There's no Assistant Supervisor. 911 Specialist II's act in that capacity when needed. The proposed new positions will address several critical personnel and operational deficiencies. Several that I'll mention. It establishes a second level of supervision. It allows for the development of supervisors. And it also establishes a career path. This is often a question during interviews for hiring. People want to know about the potential for advancement in the organization. And it also establishes clear lines of succession. The important thing is the 911 Specialist III positions would be created by the reclassification of existing 911 Specialist II positions. There will not be any new positions. They will be moved from a grade 16 to a 17. The filling of the 911 Specialist III position would be through a promotional process for the 911 Specialist II's. So that's the only major new thing that we're talking about as far as initiatives.
So you said there is not a creation of new positions, just like restructuring?
Reclassification, right.
Okay.
Usually reclassification.
Usually reclassifications cost us money, Dave.
That's right.
This one didn't.
This one has a minor bump for each of the positions that we're looking to increase. It's listed on the schedule. I always forget which schedule I've listed it as. It's Schedule F. And so it is listed on there, the total dollar impact that that has. But again, it's not creating four new positions. It's taking positions that we already had and creating those.
Sure.
So now you have just a supervisor and then your workers are...
That's correct. Right.
So you're going to have a second Assistant Manager per se in case the supervisor's not there for that shift.
That's correct. They would never be allowed to be off at the same time, except on special circumstances, probably by me. And I will say this, it's very difficult, especially in a 911 center, with the responsibilities that their supervisors have to make to order somebody to be a boss. That is not a good thing to do. So that really allows for the mentoring of the supervisors.
How do you choose this person? Will it be a test given or by seniority or...
It would be an oral interview and an assessment meet by myself and the Deputy Director. You have to be an Operator II before you can... You have to be a Specialist II before you...
Can you move... You talk softly. Can you put the mic like right in front of you?
I do.
And that's not a bad thing.
Okay. You have to be a Specialist II to do it. We have Operators, 911 Specialist I's, but you have to be a II.
Ms. Olin, we forgot to introduce you. Can you welcome and can you give your...
Pam Olin, Director of Finance.
Thank you. And I have a question. What are those bumps financially?
So Exhibit F, I was looking for that. Let's see.
Oh, you don't have it yet?
I'm just trying to find the right line. Give me one second.
Okay. If not, we can come back to it.
So we're talking about $16,000 across four positions, so $4,000 per position.
Yeah, $4,000 increase, which is not bad for a leadership position.
So...
That's not much money to be put in charge.
Well, that's in addition.
I didn't want it on there.
So, yeah, that is listed in the Exhibit F as 911 Specialist III Assistant Supervisor, and then it has parentheses, "four" behind it. And so it would go to a new grade of 17, and it would be $16,000 across the four positions.
You say Exhibit F. I'm looking at the Munis detailed report.
So it would not be... Again, as we stated, this is part of the tab that calls Budget, and there's the Exhibit F, and that's all the changes that we're proposing to positions in the budget.
Yeah. I don't find that either. I have Exhibit D, but I don't know where this F is.
And the reason I say that is because operations as a whole has gone down. The cost for operations, salaries has gone down.
Yes, and it's due to turnover in the positions. So some of their higher paying positions have turned over.
Understood. It's on page 20, the PDF page 29, Exhibit F. There's not a page number to give you for the book. So I can't help you with that.
Yeah.
But it is page 29 in the PDF.
All right.
And I don't see it listed as...
So it's under... So it's about a third of the way down. It says Emergency Services is the department.
There it is.
And then it says Specialist III.
All right. My problem here is with the PDF, when I was searching, that particular page doesn't... isn't acknowledged. It goes right past it.
We obviously are in everything though, so I'm not sure why.
Yes, it's going right past it. It goes to Exhibit D, it comes to all these. Go past all those. And it says there's nothing else. It doesn't recognize that. That's weird.
Mr. Cannon, is it page 29 at the top or is it down at the bottom?
No, page 29 would be up at the top. 29 out of 31 pages, so it's almost near the end of the entire budget book.
Okay, I'm looking at 234 pages.
You're probably looking at the Munis part.
So what is that, the Executive Proposed?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have to pull that tab up.
So, yeah, that tab, that's where the Exhibit F is, and that's what's attached to the legislation.
You're looking at Munis, Larry?
Yeah.
There's another one called just Executive Proposed Budget.
Yep, I just pulled that one up.
Okay.
And what page is that, 29?
29.
That's small print, isn't it? Chief Communications Supervisor, is that it?
That's it.
Okay. All right. It doesn't say how many.
It has it in parentheses, "four."
All right. And you said a salary change of $14,260?
It's... I think you're looking at that go up two lines from there. It's $16,000.
Okay. Specialist, 911 Specialist, okay. That looked like it fell under Jury Commissioner, that's why I couldn't find that.
Yeah. That one is a little easier to read on a sheet of paper, just because you can kind of put another sheet of paper as a ruler as a line, so...
I prefer paper over PDF.
So it is in your budget book behind the tab called Budget, and it's Exhibit F.
And you said it's four positions?
Four positions.
And that's because you have four shifts?
That's correct, sir.
Okay. You can continue unless there's any more questions. All right, thank you.
Yeah, there's two other items I'd just like to bring to your attention that showed substantial increases in my budget. We are breaking ground for the new radio shop this month, actually. And along with that became a utility bill increase that was not budgeted before, so it's in this year's budget. So in our utility account, you'll see an increase of about $23,000 there.
Is that for the year?
No, it's for eight months.
For eight months?
Yes, because in talking to Peyton Matthews as far as moving into the facility, we thought we could prorate it for eight months.
What happens after the eight months?
Well, it'd be new fiscal year.
It'd be a new fiscal year that we'd have to worry about then.
Yeah, right. We would make up the difference in the cost there.
Is that where you budgeted? $114,624, Dave?
Yes, sir. And of that is approximately $23,200 is for the radio shop.
It's shown a total of about... Unless if I have the right line, it's showing a total of about $30,720 with our...
Yeah. Part of it's electric costs for other things too, but that was an increase there.
And what was the cost? What was the reason for that again? I'm sorry.
The radio shop is being built, and so by the time the radio shop is created, we will have electric costs in that shop. It's a new space. It's a new area, so we haven't been paying for that area.
Okay.
And we interacted with the architect as well as Peyton Matthews to come up with the pricing for it. And something you're probably familiar with, it's $2.10 for per square foot for the occupied site is what we used, and then 70 cents for the unoccupied.
Where is that radio shop?
It's going to be right outside the parking lot of the detention center, right by the big tower.
It looks congested out there, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. But we'll fortunately be able to park some of our vehicles on that property or release some of the congestion.
Okay.
Was that also the reason for your increase in Ethernet?
No, that... The increase in the Ethernet connection is a... was a transfer. We moved between two accounts. I think it was $25,000, is that what you're asking about? Let's see.
Yes.
Yes. We moved, if you'll let me just a moment, I can give you the exact account numbers. The increase in the cost there is associated with moving the Ethernet charges cited below from the phone administration account. So it's a wash. It was moved from one account to the other.
Okay. Okay. Right below it, yeah, I see there's a $37... Yeah, okay. Actually, it looks like we came out ahead on that.
Yeah, a couple of that... $2,000, I think it was, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep. And that would be it as far as anything major.
Okay, good. Do we have any questions for Mr. Shipley on the budget?
What was the $96,600 offset on the grant funding offset? What was it? I don't even know what that was about. I was just curious.
I believe that had something to do with some previous grant that we had gotten for some salary stuff, and that I'm not aware that we're getting that one again this year, so that's why I took it out.
Okay. The one thing I would say overall, and not your department, Dave, but your department is just emblematic of the county as a whole, we're seeing, I think, in this budget, and this is for Pam and for John more so than you, Dave, but I've noticed that we're seeing where benefits are down, and then we'll have like one-time-only costs, which were one-time-only last year. So that's considered as a negative for the budget. And then there's... Sometimes capital costs will go away because it was a kind of a one-time capital expense. And so by the time you get through with everything, the department looks like it has a real minimal increase. But when you really look at it, operating, some capital expenses, and in some departments there are huge capital increases, and there are some larger operating, and of course it comes to here, and if you're looking at it, you go, oh, well, that's great. They're, you know, they're 1% below last year. But if you really look at what the expenses are, and you balance the one-time-only in those capitals, you've actually increased your operating.
In some cases, yes. There has been some... There has been some increase. And I mean, again, like everything, we gave in '21, we gave a 5% increase...
Right.
...to employees, so that impacts benefits. We have a benefit increase in health insurance this year that we have to pay. It's minimal, but we still have to pay it. It's 1.8%. So, yes, but we attempted to look at everything across the board and say, are there major operating cost increases that could be avoided? And most of them are not avoidable. They're things like electric for a radio shop that we've made a decision that we're going forward with, that we need this radio shop. Well, you can't put up a radio shop and not run electric to it and heat it and cool it and let them actually work on radios. So, yes, operating costs, like everybody else's business and their personal budget, things are going up. Again, we then looked at in total, okay, what capital can we afford with those operating increases? And so, yes, in total, we made... The department may be looking flat because we made the operational decision that we couldn't fund a certain capital item this year to be able to keep our budget where it is.
Yeah, I was just hoping that... And believe me, I think the council has 100% confidence in you and John, and we've come such a long way. But my concern is that we're looking at it from a zero-based budgeting as opposed to, well, you know, they spent, you know, they spent, you know, $6 million last year. We're at 6.1 this year. That's okay. We're actually part of that six last year was, you know, just, you know, $500,000 of one-time-only expenses. You know what I'm saying, right?
Yes, I do. But for every department that had those one-time-only expenses kind of go down to offset the other, we've had other departments where if you look at them, they're what... They do have one-time expenses this year. And I will say, one of the reasons why across the board, one-time-only expenses went down is over the last several years, IT has done a fantastic job of getting our infrastructure for IT, you know, everybody's laptops, computers, that kind of stuff, up to date. And so those have been going in, those one-time-only, and a lot of departments this year did not have to have that because we have a relatively current set of computers across the board. And so we now have a plan where, you know, departments are getting those turned over in the appropriate timeframe so that we have the appropriate technology for everybody. So this year happened to be a year that we didn't have to have a lot, and IT loads that. And so you will notice one-time expense went down. Well, that's where the IT numbers are.
Right. What exactly is dues and subscriptions compared to professional fees?
Professional fees would be like a license or something like that. And dues and subscriptions would be memberships to like the Maryland Emergency Management Association and Doug, which is Billy Nutter, that type of thing.
Okay. What... You have local travel, $1,500. What's that for?
Almost all of that is for callback to work for 911 operators.
Is that overtime?
The callback would be, but they're also paid mileage.
They're paid mileage, so the travel would be $1,500 for that? Okay.
And that's almost entirely all that $1,500 goes.
And I think that happens often.
Do they not take their vehicles home with them? Is that why you are accruing that, because they're coming back?
911 oper... Yes, they don't use their... They don't have any department vehicles. It's all personal use, right.
And it looks like you added risk management for $5,900. What is that all about?
It was because of the... We have evolved into the risk management program, and if I could...
Right, you had that several years ago.
Yeah, now money was transferred from HR into that for the driver training, I think $2,500 of that, if I'm recalling it, is... So that's going to be a responsibility of risk management. And there were some other programs that the then-risk manager put in for, I put in the budget. It was just moving the program. It had no budget itself. We were absorbing it throughout my budget, actually.
So is this going to be an ongoing thing, a new budget?
Yes.
And who's the risk manager?
Right now, it's Ed Workheiser, assisted by... Will be assisted by the Emergency Management Safety Coordinator when we hire that person. Be the two people.
All right. Any more questions? Okay, no more questions. We thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, sir.
Dave, are we coming from the 911 flat now? Everything's getting a little easier?
Do what? I'm sorry.
Sorry. I didn't have my breakfast this morning. I'm assuming that now things are settling down a little bit with the 911... With the COVID backing off a little bit?
Oh, yeah, yes. The PUI transports, the persons of interest transports are down. They're not as high as they were. And you take a look at your daily report that we get, the hospitals' items are down too.
Yeah. You guys did a fantastic job, honestly, in orchestrating everything and getting the, what do they call the D... When you were spraying all the truck...
Oh, the disinfectant, yes.
The disinfectant, things like that.
That was very well received by not only Fire Service, but Public Works was used. Everybody was coming up there.
Very well organized. And Mr. Fishtill did a great job getting out on the weekends with a special over... Beyond, you know, over and above efforts out in the community. I thought it was a very good job you guys did.
Thank you. Pass it on. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Shipley.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, we'll have Airport. Is Mr. Rudy outside?
Assistant.
Coming on in.
Assistant here.
Good morning.
Good morning. It's not just you, is it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I thought Mr. Rudy was coming.
No, sir, he had to move his son from college today.
That's fine. All right. When you're ready, go ahead and introduce yourself and your title, and you can take your mask off while we're doing this.
Good morning. I'm Chris Davidson, Assistant Airport Manager at Salisbury Regional Airport.
Good morning. And if you would, just go ahead and highlight what you're looking for, any changes in the budget, and then from there, we'll ask questions.
As proposed, we don't have any other request that's in there.
Mm-hmm. So can you highlight some significant things through your budget? Because I know you have some ongoing projects.
If you'd like, I can highlight a couple of them.
Sure, Ms. Olin, go ahead.
If you're okay with that.
Yeah, I'm fine.
So a new area for them this year is they've... Well, let's say... Let's start with the big one. They are... Because of CARES funding, there is no general fund appropriation for the airport in 2022. So 100% of this budget is balanced by the revenue that they are going to collect and the CARES funding that they are going to receive. So everything here is 100% funded on their own. So any increase, all it does is impacts the amount that we would be recognizing for CARES funding, just so you're aware of that. We've put in a major line item called advertising at $100,000 to try to advertise our airport. And so it's a new initiative that we're looking to do, hire a company to help us advertise the benefits of using the Salisbury Airport, Salisbury, Wycomico Airport. Additionally, we are required by the FAA to be doing a pavement survey. So in, I believe it's in professionals... It's under... Where did I... I lost the line, sorry. I think it's under professional services. Yes, it's under professional services. The line item has $180,000 in it, gone up from $67,000. $75,000 of that increase is for a pavement survey that is supposed to be done, Chris, every four years? Every two years. So that is... It's not a capital item. In the past, we might have had that in capital, but it's really not capital because you're not adding to... You're just evaluating what you have, not fixing what you have at the moment. And then there are other major things are primarily down in their capital expenses. They're looking for some snow removal equipment. They're looking for an ARV truck, and they're looking to do some building upgrades around the property. And all of those, especially the equipment, has been put in operating capital in the fact that it's going to be funded with either operating revenue or CARES money.
Right. You said they're looking for an ARV truck, which Mr. Rudy came in and gave a presentation on that. So how is that going to be included in the budget?
It's included in... Under heavy equipment.
Under heavy equipment.
Under capital.
So what is ARV services? Is that the operating for salaries or no, it shouldn't be? You got $300,000 for them.
That is for Fioris contract services, yes.
It's for what?
Fioris contract services, they... For the salaries.
Which would go to the salaries?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and because it's not internal employees, it's down in the operating section because these aren't people that we employ. It's an external company that we hire.
So you needed a $10,000 increase?
Yes, to... It's just normal increase of the contract.
Okay. Yeah, it doesn't seem like much for the Fire Services of the employees. All right. Who does the snow removal?
We do it here.
I know, who's "we"?
All of us.
Okay. Because I thought at some... At one time, somebody said the firefighters did.
They may happen to pass her, but we do it.
But it's different employees now? Okay.
Yes.
Does anyone have any questions? Ms. Harley?
So I noticed that you have included $20,000 for event planning. Can you tell us what type of event you're planning at fiscal year '22?
Well, what those line items are is they were scattered through the budget over the years, and so we felt that it was more important to accurately portray what we're spending in a event planning-type event. What makes it critical this year is Wings and Wheels, or the fly-in. It's become a rather popular and large event, so we wanted to make sure we had enough money in case we did not get funding from other sources.
You typically have that in the spring, right? The Wings and Wheels event?
Yes, ma'am. We're going to, as of COVID, so, yeah.
Where that was spread out and in the other budget items, did you reduce those or just add this on the top?
We added this on the top because everything is getting so expensive now that just having somebody help park cars is, you know, costing hundreds or thousands of dollars, depending on how many people we need.
Excuse me? It's cost hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Hundreds or up to thousands of dollars.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, not hundreds of thousands.
Okay.
Hundreds, up to...
Thought I misunderstood you.
Yeah, no. Depends on how many employees or, you know, contractors we need to help out, but we just don't know because we haven't done it in so long. But the turnout last time was just apparently quite the event. So I look forward to having it again.
Would that... Wouldn't that go under a promotions budget, you know?
Advertising.
Under advertising or promotions?
Some of it may go into advertising. Yes, sir.
The advantage of having it in one line item is that it can be specifically identified as to how much... Instead of us having to try to gather from multiple lines that we spent for this one event, you now can find one event and find everything. The cost for the advertising of it, the cost of anything that you had to buy to put it on, it would all be in one spot, and so we would be able to run a report easily versus having to remember which line items it all got coded to.
What are the legal contract services or legal contracting services? I think it was $15,000.
Yes, sir. Again, it's another line item where we allocated, instead of pulling it out of professional services or some other place, we wanted to dedicate to show how much we were paying.
That's Paul's bill. In the past, it might not have been split out to all the departments, and in 2020, it started getting split out to the departments. And so it did not get budgeted in every department in '21. And so we made an effort to budget it specifically in each department that is external to the general fund so that it can be easily seen.
Oh, is there a question there? So the Law Department has their own budget. Is this in addition to the Law Department's budget?
So, yes, because what it is, is that ultimately kind of, because this is a separate fund, should the general fund be paying the legal expenses of tourism fund? You know, because tourism is a standalone fund, so is the airport, it's a standalone fund. Should they be, should the general fund have to be covering those costs? The decision was made several years ago. And it is appropriate to know what the full cost of running tourism, the full cost of running the airport. So those, when Mr. Wilber's bill comes in, we actually in finance analyze the bill and split it up based on what area he was working on.
Do, do you see this 2,000 as revenue in the operating budget for the law department?
No, because the, the, it doesn't ever get coded. It, it doesn't go in and out of the general fund. It, so if, if he has a $10,000 bill, $8,000 goes to the general fund, 500 goes to tourism, 500 goes to wreck and parks, 500 goes to solid waste, and 500 goes to airport. Might be how that bill got split. And so the, the MUNIS system allows us to be able to split a bill across funds. And then you don't incur revenue going back and forth and inflating your financial statements.
So did you do the same thing with solid waste?
Yes, they have their own legal line.
What are professional services that went from 67,000 to 180,000?
That's where we were talking about the, 75,000 of it is for the FAA required pavement study. And then the others are, we just got a lot of projects going on and we have to use our engineer of record to help us get those projects completed.
Right, do you have a list of those projects? Because that's a significant increase.
Well, most of it's that FAA study, sir. But, yes, I have.
It tripled.
So everything, when we come into CARES grant stuff, they help us with that. Environmental services and, or environmental assessment and land services, benefit cost analysis, taxiway alpha rehabilitation. Then they're helping us with the ARV facility, taxiway golf obstruction clearing, rental car parking lot. Then they help with drainage issues and helping place like the Art, new Art building. We're going to need them to help us place where the building is on the airport. It can't be just, we need, the FAA sanctions, if you will, a company, an engineering company goes through a whole vetting process to make sure they know what the FAA rules are so they keep us legal with all of the engineering requirements for the FAA.
So when you say them and they, are you referring to the consultant that you'll be using? Okay. Any questions on that?
The only thing I have is there's a transfer from reserves of the 783-810. What might that be all about? I mean, with so much funding this coming in through CARES and everything else, I was kind of...
That was the, that was the old, that's prior year. So that's '21. If you look at '22, there's nothing in that column.
All right, then, okay. Yep, you're 100% correct. Sorry about that.
That's okay. It, again, this is the first year in a long time that there is an, no appropriation coming from...
Yeah, it's great. And I think it's fantastic that we're finally getting some of these expenses out of the way as far as dealing with, you know, maintenance repairs and, and building repairs and things like that. The more capital you can do right now, the better because of the position that we're in with the CARES funding. It's, it's long overdue.
Yes, sir.
That's great.
How are the flights? Are there many passengers?
Yes, sir, so right now, they haven't drastically increased the amount of flights that are in and out of...
They have or have not?
They, they have, but it's not drastic, they're not back up to the full. But the aircraft, we haven't had the April numbers yet. And that's when we expect to see Piedmont give us a real report of, you know, that's when things started spiking. Now, the, overall, TSA has been screening over a million passengers a day, a million and a half over the past three to six weeks, I can't remember exactly when.
Not in Waukamiko.
Well, no, sir, over nationwide.
Right.
But compared to this time last year, it's a several hundred percent increase. So, yes, sir, positive trends for nationwide travel, not international travel.
Okay, and then maybe with this advertising, you'd see more traveling?
Yes, sir, that's, that's the goal, is we've got to get the name out there so people know that they have a commercial airport at their, for them.
Any more questions or comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank y'all very much.
So it was quick and easy. So I guess we're way ahead of schedule now. This Public Works is out there. They are? You want to take a, a quick break?
Yeah, Chris, thanks.
All right, take care. You want to take a quick break?
I'm ready.
All right, bring them in.
They want to look at calling, the local management's right downstairs so they could come up early.
Come on up.
Pardon me? It's online. The budget tab is...
I haven't looked at, because I have this.
Yes. The budget tab is on, the budget is online. I, the thing that, everything behind the tab budget is online.
Lee, how come I haven't seen any pictures of you in ditches lately?
I get in ditches a lot, really.
Just haven't posted them.
In fact, in fact, I like the iPhone because it, it'll like generate from the day of history or whatever, like an album.
Hope they do that.
It's one of me and nothing but looking at ditches and...
Morning. Glad you all came up early. My God.
Here, I was thinking when I came in, I was late. Everybody else was gone.
So you all got cameras up on the ferries?
We have them up at ferry already.
Okay. You gonna put them on Whitehaven, too?
We tried to schedule on a day that ferry's going to be down for something anyway.
Right.
We'll have the witch flip this term, maybe we'll have the negative anchor.
Great, that's really good.
Good morning.
Morning, sir, how are you?
We're a little ahead of schedule, so when you're ready, if you would, introduce yourself with name and title and all of your colleagues, you can introduce them as well.
Okay.
They decided to not join you, they want to hide in the back.
Mark Whitelock, Deputy Director of Public Works. With me, Roads Superintendent Lee Alton. Roads Accountant Joan Freeny. And Solid Waste Accountant Lynn Wright.
Morning, everyone. So if you would, go ahead and highlight some of the things that you want to go over that are significant, like some of the changes, increases, and we'll ask questions from there.
Okay, so let's start with Roads first.
Yes.
So Roads is asking for $9,531,000. It's basically a 36% increase over last year.
Yeah.
Those increases are driven, one by $1 million of paving money that was cut from last year's budget at the executive level, that never made it to you guys. So that was $1 million there. There's an additional ask of $50,000 to, it's, it's, it's for the fuel system out at Roads. It's basically a, a software upgrade. So we're asking for that.
Yeah.
Because we have been having trouble, apparently, the, the software and some of the equipment that we have now is old enough now that they really can't do anything with it. Another significant increase was the ferry overhaul for Whitehaven, which has not been done. It should have been done last year, putting it in, back in this year, which that was, let me see where that was.
So when it's taken out of service, what are they doing to it? It seems like it's periodically taken out of service.
They, they do a lot, I mean, they change the engines, they, you know, transmissions, they sound the haul to make sure there's no thin spots, so it's not going to...
Isn't that an overhaul?
That is an overhaul, yeah. So, yeah, but we haven't had that done. Generally, what was that, Lee? We tried to have those done every...
Every two years.
Every two years.
For two years.
It's actually an upper ferry this year that's coming up.
It's upper ferry.
Seems like it happens often, okay.
I can't hear you.
It's been four, it's been four years since Upper Ferry has been overhauled. So this is $385,000 for the Upper Ferry to be pulled out of service for a period of time to do all the things that Mark mentioned.
And it's just really, it's just to ensure that the ferry doesn't break down in the middle of the river.
We don't want that, do we?
Yeah, people, people...
Yeah, I thought the discussion was coming from the back of the room and it's hard to see lips moving with no mask on. Ms. Harley?
I was just going, do you do the maintenance on that during the winter months when it's not used as much?
So the only, the only problem with that, waiting for winter...
Lee, can you go to one of the mics?
Sure.
Come up here with me.
Yeah, you're probably going to be doing most of the speaking on this, so...
The only problem with waiting till winter is that it has to be painted and it's done outside. So it's better to have the overhaul done when it's a little bit warmer and you don't have to worry about that because we do require a 45-day turnaround from the time that they get the ferry till the time that we get it back. And that's asking a lot if we're having snow or, you know, inclement weather, so...
Put your mic down a little bit.
Plus, plus paint don't set as well in cold weather.
That's right, yeah.
Not at all, okay.
So additionally past that, one thing that we have put in is for some of the larger ditch culvert replacements that go through some of the tax ditches in the county. One in particular, Joe, you'll probably know about this one, is the one on Cemetery in Pittsfield.
I know about most of them.
Yeah, the, the, that one's...
On that side of town.
That, that one's in pretty rough shape. So what we're trying to do is, is dictate to the roads and the pipes when we replace them instead of having the roads and the pipes dictate when we do it. Because once they fail, then we're, we pretty much have to go do that. Out of those, that is the major difference in Roads budget and the ask.
Mark, I have one quick question. The, the ferry overhaul, would that increase the weight capacity that you can haul on the ferry?
No. But one of the things we are going to do when we pull the ferry this time is have a marine engineer look at it and give us a capacity. We've, we've got several different documents that say several different things. And we're going by 10,000 pounds right now, we've got another one that said...
We have one that says 12,000.
And then there was another one that said 15,000. So we're not sure what it'll, so we need to know. And that will help alleviate hopefully some of this congestion that's going on with the number of cars that can actually go across the ferry.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, and when Upper Ferry, I think it was around 2003, it was cut in half and a new piece added in so it could take extra vehicles, which is great for passenger vehicles, but the, the weight limit was still stated 10,000 pounds. It's been there for a long time. And we just want to make sure that, that we're correct and if we increase that weight limit a little bit, that we're going to be okay.
What's the employee situation over at Roads right now?
We're still, how many spots down now?
We've just had four or five people that we've just hired, so that's going to help us. But we're still down four positions currently. Certainly, if you go back in time, we're way down. But as we stand right now, for what, for positions we have available, we're, we're, once we get these people hired, we'll still be down four.
So that, the four you're down is, if you had those four, you would be a capacity for the budget. Is that correct, or?
Yeah, yeah, we would be back to what we...
I know we deleted a lot of employees out of the budget.
Right.
A few years ago.
Right.
One thing that we did add back to this budget for them is some part-time salaries to allow, so you'll see a line of $75,000 for part-time salaries in Roads to allow them...
That's on my list.
To allow them to hire some part-time people to, there's actually two pieces of that, to hire some part-time people to help, I believe, with the mowing.
Yes.
And the upkeep of, of, along the sides of the roads. And then the second piece is to start a weed coordinator position as a, a kind of joint venture between us and a, to break...
Department of Ag, I believe.
Yeah, so we're, we're funding a part-time weed coordinator to help us control the weed population along the, the roads. And so in this department, we have funded that part-time position as well as some supplies for that. The total across all the lines that we had to put in for that is $30,000. About 15,000 of it is in salary and the rest of it is spread amongst needing supplies and stuff for that position. But the other $60,000 in part-time is to help them maintain the roads.
And you mentioned a part-time weed coordinator for the roads. What about the trash on the roads?
Well, that would be the $60,000 for, would help with that because they would have people who would be able to go out and mow and main, and help maintain the roads.
I did talk to the warden last week. They had Appreciation Day for the correctional officers. She said with the COVID testing and vaccinations that they were hoping at the end of the May, end of May, they may be able to get some people back out.
That certainly helped.
That would be huge.
Yeah, so, anyway.
So for the major...
Look, I, I have another question on that. We were talking about the salaries Mr. Holloway mentioned and taking salaries out of the budget. For the 75,000, do you have employees lined up?
Well, that would be part-time, so we'd have to, until it's hired, until it's approved, you'd have to hi, we'd have to advertise and hire at this point.
You didn't have anybody in mind like you used previously?
No.
Because I, I know when Mr. Baker was here, that, we always talked about salaries and it was hard and difficult for Roads, Public Works to hire employees. Do you see that as a problem this year?
Yeah, we, until about a month ago, we hadn't seen an application come in since before Christmas. So, and we, we lost six people alone in the last year during the COVID and all other various reasons, going to state, going to, you know, green pastures, I guess. But, um, but yeah, hiring is a problem.
And what is the problem with hiring? Is it the salaries?
The salaries.
It would be the salary, would be the main thing. But we don't have, people that, that have the requirements...
Off occasions.
For, say, motor equipment operator, they're going to go somewhere else and be a truck driver and make quite a bit more money. So you have to get someone in that takes a look at the down-the-road picture. And they want to stay for the security of, of a job at the county and maybe a retirement at some point down the road.
Young people don't think about that.
No.
Well, we either get, it seems that we get either under the spectrum. So we're getting someone that's very young, that doesn't have any experience. And what we've had to do is, and we've done this in the past, is if we hire someone as an MEO one, then we have to require that they will get their CDL within a certain amount of time. But then you take the chance, they get their CDL, now they're qualified for a job somewhere else and they move on. But, um, but, you know, we don't really have a choice at this moment.
One of the problems we have seen too is the state has bumped up their starting salary for the road maintenance workers to 14, 50 an hour, where ours are 12, 12, 50 an hour. So...
13 something.
Yeah, I mean, if that sort of thing continues, what we'll end up being is, is a training ground.
Right. Which is what we're doing now, because a lot of people that we've hired and we taught to do the things that we do, the state loves them because they don't do those types of things all the time.
And we want to prevent that, especially we're paying for their training.
Yeah.
Yeah. So maybe in the future, it deserves discussion such as a work session to find out what we can do differently as far as salaries, recruiting and retaining?
Certainly say that would help.
As counsel, I believe, is aware, we're in the midst of doing a salary survey that we intend to have ready for the 2023 budget. And that's part of the reason why it's, it is, we're in that process of making the final selection and getting it under contract so that when we come to the 2023 budget, we can show to counsel the impact of what you've been hearing from the different departments and what you could continue to hear from other departments of being, you know, the market, we're not paying market. But we didn't want to, we didn't want to this year just kind of throw darts at what that is. We wanted a comprehensive study to help us get to there. And we were, we're looking at all positions across all departments.
Okay, and that's a year away, so we do have to think more progressively. Mr. Holloway, were you going to say something?
I had a question. When you send folks out to pick up trash, is that funded from Roads or is that funded from solid waste?
It's according which crew goes out. Lee, he tends to try to find a Friday or something that he can shut down some of his other operations because that's the problem with that. Whenever we pull away from, you know, whenever we need to have to go pick up trash off the side of the road, then we stop doing something else that we were doing. Individually, those divisions pay their crews accordingly when they go out.
Under normal times, which we haven't been lately, how did that work?
And under normal times, we would not have rank-and-file employees, MEOs.
Well, you have somebody drive the bus, right, or the truck?
No.
It would be a guard from the jail.
So who, who funds that?
The, the jail.
No, that was paid, well, Roads, Roads had it, they didn't pay anything because they're a general fund, that's basically taken from one hand, put in the other. Solid Waste, being an enterprise, they did pay the salaries of the officers that were there with the inmates.
Okay.
So that's how that worked.
We furnished the vehicle and all the equipment. Detention Center would furnish the guard. And then however many, I don't know if you call it work release, but however many people they could get out that day and they, you know. And they didn't just do trash. We had one inmate crew that did the weed eating around guardrails and things like that, small stuff like that, or they would do little handwork in ditches, you know, pull stuff out. And then we'd have a crew that pretty much focused on, on litter control.
Okay.
Mr. Whitelock?
Yeah, so, so primarily, that's our major overages in the Roads budget. If anybody has any questions on that.
Any more questions on that?
So with the increase in, with the increase in the paving, how much paving, how many miles of paving do you think you'll be able to do with that?
This $2 million and this one, this $1 million extra, that'll basically put us back to where we were two years ago. So what was, what was it?
Usually for about the million and a half, we can do 14 or so miles of paving.
A blacktop.
Yeah. And of course, we still have our chip sealed it every year. And then whatever roads we can identify that are candidates for sealing.
Okay. And before you do those, you have to go out and do the tiles and.
Correct.
And then go back after you do them and do the driveways and make sure everything.
Shoulders and.
All that's done in-house.
Correct.
Yeah. The only thing you're really contracting out is the paving.
Is the, is, yep, the paving.
Now, are we getting all the, all of the ground blacktop back for the county to use that the paving company is grinding?
In fact, you'll see a lot of it on our dirt roads and we've been using our asphalt millings to fix up our dirt roads. You know, to make them as best they can. We use them for shoulders, we use them for washouts, we use the millings for a lot of things. And then when we get full, we reach out to solid waste or to parcel rack to see if they need any. And then we'll have them deliver there so they can use them wherever they need to.
I know you monitor the paving when it's being done. You have somebody that monitors the grinding and makes sure whether we're getting what we're supposed to get back to us.
Yeah, I mean, the miller's out there, the inspector's out there when the milling's taking place. And I mean, they're, they're running back and forth to the shop. We don't have someone sitting there counting loads as they come in, but by how quickly we get filled up, I mean, it's, we have more than we can have room for usually. And there is, there is sometimes an opportunity that, say, when the contract was renegotiated or a new bid went out, that, you know, they get money for the, for those millings to take them back as recycled asphalt product. So they sell it to the plant. So, you know, you can get a little bit of a better price on your paving if, if you let them have a certain amount of the millings. But we found, especially with all the flooding that we've had, that we would like to have them and plus use them for our dirt roads.
Good idea because we do have a lot of flooding. Promotions for $150,000 a year, what are we doing this every year? Consulting services, I'm sorry.
Consulting services. I mean, I can be a lot of things.
Yeah.
Engineering for pipe work or, or anything else.
Drainage studies, anything that gets contracted out as far as consulting work, you know.
Seems like a random number, but 150,000 every year. It's, you're just throwing that out there.
We, we generally, especially right now, you know, especially this year, we saw some of those heavier rains come back.
Yeah.
We already had hotspots that were in the county as far as drainage issues anyway. So these, some of these were new, so we're doing drainage studies there to see how those things can be corrected too. It's just, you know, we're just moving down, down the line.
I mean, we need it, but it just looks kind of odd being the same figure year to year.
Well, because it's not, until we know which road we're doing, we don't know that this year it's going to cost us $120,000 and next year it's going to cost us $140,000. So. Or it's going to cost us $160,000. We put in 150,000 because we end up using pretty close to that and it's based on what roads we end up having to contract help for. So instead of trying to tie it to a specific dollar amount every year that we think it's going to be these six things, we put a lump sum in there.
Any more questions or comments?
I'd only say that, and I'm hoping it is mostly because of the fact that we're trying to recover, getting back to square one. But in, in both roads and solid waste, the increases in your capital and your operating are astronomical?
The increases that you see in Rhodes and partially are the bit, two, two of the biggest things that you see. One, because you didn't see this last year, you had a million dollars less in blacktop. So that's an automatic million-dollar uptick on that. The other is, and I believe that was fairly close to $500,000 in itself in these drainage improvements of moving through these huge pipes that are, you know, run through some of these tax ditches under these roads that we're not capable of doing ourself. So those things have to be, you know, have to be engineered. And then a contractor has to come in because some of these pipes are up to 10 feet. And, and, you know, from, from bottom to top, and those are something that we just don't have the capabilities of dealing with.
Additionally, they are looking for some heavy equipment that they have, and heavy equipment is expensive. They're looking for three six-wheeled vehicles that are $150,000 each. So that's $450,000 to buy three vehicles. So yes, as we've said before, it's kind of one of those ebbs and flows. Like you buy three of them this year, they didn't buy any of those last year. And so it's a one-time cost of buying these big, heavy pieces of equipment. And that's why there's a, a big jump in their number.
I thought we were leasing vehicles.
Not, heavy equipment is not an easy one. We're leasing the, the pickup trucks and that kind of stuff that move the people around. But our heavy equipment, most of those we do not lease.
I thought we leased solid waste equipment.
No, well, we do, we do, but that's, that's, that's a different program than the enterprise program. That's something that we've done for, for years is, solid waste is a very abrasive environment. So about five years is probably about the best you're going to expect out of a bulldozer or something like that. So after that five years, the maintenance expense starts to crawl up on you. So we try to get those things out and, and replace them with, with new ones. Because there's some things, I mean, like that large compactor that's up there, it's almost a million-dollar piece of, of equipment. But when it breaks down, it, it really gives us a lot of problems and some instability in the hill because we don't get the compaction that we should. And costs airspace too, just because it's not compacted as much.
Well, I know that there are leasing companies that lease trucks. Have we ever explored that? Leasing dump trucks, I mean, is that?
I know that that was looked into at one time and I think that, you know, Rhodes generally keeps their equipment for a long time. I mean, we still have 1980s dump trucks. We still have, you know, old equipment.
The dump trucks that we're asking for, those, those dump trucks are very old and they've seen a lot of salt in their life. So they have a lot of, you know, metal fatigue, rusting going on with them and, and just general chassis corrosion. And some of them, the bodies even were, you know, have holes in them. So those are the ones that we're trying to get out and get them replaced.
So there's no leasing programs for heavy equipment like bulldozers?
Well, they, they are, we call that a lease, but it's, it's actually, it's a five-year buyback program. Most heavy equipment, people offer this and it's basically, it's, it's, to a point, it's a lease. You, you can either keep it at the end or you can turn it back in and basically get another one. That's basically how it works. Which is some of it is what you'll see in solid waste budget as well.
So there's no benefit to leasing?
I don't, I have not gone that far into it, no.
We have not spent as much time looking at heavy equipment leasing as we have just the standard vehicle leasing for across. And so that is something we could investigate, but it's, it's another type of company. It's not enterprise.
Even in saying that, I mean, solid waste, traditionally, we don't, we don't lease our vehicles, our cars and trucks. We don't because a lot of our cars and trucks, I, I have two 1992 Ford pickups. And either one respectively has just about 40,000 miles on it. Because it, it goes to an excavator and it comes back. You know, or it may go to Conley Mill, which is a short run, and it comes back. They don't really get a lot of miles. They get a lot more age than they do miles. And we, we, you know, we keep up with our equipment, we service our stuff, so they, they last a lot longer. So I don't know that solid waste in that case would benefit through an enterprise lease program.
And I respect the fact that you're keeping pickups like that.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I mean, that's, that's our oldest, it's probably 1990. I'm not sure if they're 90s or 92s, but they're.
40,000.
Somewhere in the area, 40,000 miles.
All right.
And we have the tractors on there too, which those are, we purchased seven in 2014 and we, we need to start placing them or we're going to have a problem.
Yeah, replacements.
But that's not in this budget.
Your, your maintenance cost.
They have two, they have two new ones in here at 103,000.
Not seven.
But not seven.
Not seven.
So again, three, they have three six-wheels and 150 each, so that's 450 plus 206,000 in for tractors. And then the Upper Ferry overhaul, the drainage project is 538,000. And are the culverts that Mark was talking about, and there's 1.1 million dollars in blacktop. So again, that is, that's the growth in their department.
Okay.
So to answer your question, John, I mean, that's Rhodes. Solid waste is a different animal. Solid waste, as, as we all know, I mean, we're, we're going.
Before you get to solid waste, I just want to ask a quick question on the funding for the drainage construction. Is that funding going to be used for any of the problem areas that were brought before council? I remember like Kwood Dry, Pratt Road, Levin de Shiel Road, are any of those being addressed?
No, the, the, these, these, these particular drainage projects are, are pipes that we know are, are having some age and they're starting to have problems that we want to dictate the motion to them before that something happens to them. And then they, we have to go replace it. So those are not those things. You know, some of what you're talking about runs through engineering as well. You know, some of the whip and the MS4 stuff, it's, 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 it's a little bit bigger pot for, for what you're talking about.
But also to answer your question, in, in the consultant services, there's a line item for engineering for one of the problem areas in S. Plavok subdivision off of Crooked Oak. So, and then some of the other ones that you mentioned, we've actually done work on in-house with Levin de Shiel, with ditches and paving. Log Cabin Road was a big drainage project. Hickory Mill was a big drainage project. All those things have been being worked on. None of those, none of those drainage projects have been just forgotten about as far as where the problem areas were unless there are issues out of our hands that are more to dealing with funding, like Kwood, for instance.
And then the Kwood is another one. It's not going away. It's in the design phases on what we actually need to do to get to a construction point where we can actually do something to help those people there.
It's just been a while since they've gotten the updates.
Yeah, sure. Right. And we haven't heard from the one individual from Kwood because I believe they've moved.
There was a lot of things that happened over there. One of the biggest, I think, arguments that the, the one woman had was due to the impervious surface that was put there from the dump truck operator.
Yeah.
The dump trucks are no longer there. That's some, the man, he passed away and some other people have moved. So it's not quite as vocal as it was. And I don't know if it's actually, and, and we all know, it's not raining today like it was four or five years ago. I mean, those things are showing themselves in absolutely, you know, heavy participation years that we haven't had lately, until just here lately. I mean, we have had, everyone's here lately, but.
I would, I would hope though that all, all the work at Dallas spent probably a year on as a huge distraction from his regular day-to-day.
Right.
I would hope that we wouldn't lose sight of what he had prepared.
No.
And I, I agree with what Ms. Hurley said is it would be nice to, if we could, get a meeting once again to sort of review where we are with that because we owe that to the constituents, I think.
And, and to say that, so, you know, my road, I mean, my engineering, my, my engineers, we, we meet and those are the things that are on their, their schedules of things. When we have our update meetings, they tell me where they're at and what things are going on. Some of them are a little bit, I'm a little bit more pressed on time. And we're trying to get some design work for the work in West Nissdale. That money, you know, is sitting there. I want to get that thing, I want to get that moving and get that done. Another one was Hunter's Mill Stormwater Pond.
Exactly.
Clean out on that one. This particular Kwood, it's, and, and we call, we call the, because it was, it was basically put out to another firm. I'm not sure if it was DBF or who it was, but we call and say, where are you at on these, you know, these projects? And then they come back and they let me know. So we're not going to let them go because we have a significant amount of money invested in, you know, these designs to fix these problems. And certainly problems that we don't want to have come back just because we haven't had large rains. We don't forget about them.
Yeah, because, you know, you may get it in, in one month from now.
Right.
You may find that again in one month. And all those people are going to turn on and go, where the heck has the county been for over a year or two?
And that is right.
And you're going to have to answer that?
So, yeah. So.
Ms. Hackley, did you have a question?
I just, I don't, I'm not sure if we're ready to move on. I just had a question on the mosquito control and it's not a very significant amount. I just was wondering if you could touch a little bit on how that, that service is funded. I see the county portion, but is there also a state?
They are, yes, they are quasi-county, state. I don't believe, that doesn't come through Rhodes, does it? It doesn't come through public works, no.
Okay.
The only question.
They have a separate budget, I suspect.
All right.
The only question I have, which is more in general, again, you're my favorite target of here. That's because you're the furthest one across the room. With the enterprise accounts, such as solid waste, when do you see that we're going to get back on an even keel where they are truly enterprise accounts? Because the enterprise accounts are supposed to be self.
As of right now, this fiscal year, every enterprise account that is actually labeled an enterprise is enterprise. So airport, solid waste and tourism are 100% funded by their own operations and/or funding from other, from other sources like CARES. So none of the, the, if you're thinking about Civic Center, Civic Center has moved. Civic Center has now become a governmental fund like Rec and Parks. And so those two are governmental funds and receive appropriations. And I don't expect those to ever, I mean, Rec and Parks doesn't generate enough revenue, I mean, for what it is. And Civic Center, there are very few arenas in the country that if, that are not supported by another entity to maintain them. And so the, the entities that are considered enterprise funds currently are 100% enterprise for 2022.
And it's airport, solid waste, and what was the third?
Tourism.
Tourism. What about the nursing home? Was that an enterprise?
So the nursing home is not, is not labeled as an enterprise fund, I don't believe. I, they are a separate audited entity that does have ties back that if they have a loss, the county has to support them. But at this point in time, there is no. The county has funding in for capital projects for them, but does not have funding in to support their operations.
But shouldn't the capital projects come in as part of a self-sufficiency of an enterprise?
So it's a standalone entity that the county owns the assets, so we maintain those assets.
Ms. Holloway?
What about Baron Creek Road? I haven't heard, heard anything about that lately.
Actually, I just, we had the stormwater plans on their sign the other day. I suspect that administration will be bringing that before you guys here shortly, see about the funding on that.
All right. We're going to have to wrap this up soon.
Sure. So, I mean, we can, we could look at engineering. Engineering really hasn't changed that much. The one major significant jump that you see is 164. It was due to a, a copying machine that copied the plans. They, they had actually put in for it last year, but they didn't put in there enough money. So we addressed that and just put it back in. That's basically how that works. Other than that, I mean, you have your usual suspects, your MS4, your, your whip stuff. And, and those are things that, so I think we have another two years beyond to meet our, you know, our percentages for impervious surfaces in the county. We have actually, you know, the cleanup by Comico is, is actually an MS, it's, it's a whip program. Because it's like street sweeping, we count street sweeping. We count roadside litter, it's the same thing, and we get credits for those. We're working on another one that we're going to present to administration here shortly, so you should be seeing that. And that's another. But those are the, the usual suspects. They're, they're the big spenders. Everything else is, is just day-to-day operational things that they do. Some consulting stuff and the same thing. It works hand-in-hand with some of the drainage and some other things that are going on. So if anybody's got any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Ms. Holloway?
Are we talking about solid waste now?
That was engineering.
Okay.
Now, yeah, solid waste is not that easy, but engineering wasn't that bad.
When we're ready for solid waste.
All right, so solid waste, hold on, I got a much better book.
What does recycling fall under?
Solid waste, solid waste is a, is an enterprise fund. And that's exactly where I'm trying to keep solid waste as being an enterprise fund. So, you know, the things that, that, what you're seeing is a, and, and a lot of the things that I think John has some concerns about. You know, we've purchased land. We have, we're moving through a permitting phase for the landfill expansion on the other side of Brick Hill Road. And those, those are, you know, not so much the, the land purchases, even though they are large numbers. The, the permitting process is a five-year process that we have to go through. We're in phase two of a four-phase process in that. We're almost done with phase two. And, I mean, those are, those are basically the pains of, you know, going in through the state and doing the things that we need to do to get a permitted landfill. the state and doing the things that we need to do to get a permitted landfill. A lot of the things that you will see this year, or maybe, I mean, do you guys have specific questions that you want to ask on any specific thing?
Joe, did you have a question on this?
Yeah, I know you brought to us before that you wanted to increase the fee for the landfill stickers.
Yes.
I think that's the wrong time, the wrong time to do that due to the fact we are having so much problems with trash along the roads.
Well.
Let me finish. You said that people were abusing the stickers. I've found no, I've been to several of the transfer stations and for the most part, the guys check them. In fact, my wife got checked the other day after going to one transfer station for years. I don't know whether somebody said, hey, you're not checking them enough or whatever, but.
You asked them to check every so many.
Yeah, so I'm highly, highly opposed to that this year. I know last year you asked for a $5 increase. We kept it the same. It seems like this year you've come along with a different idea, maybe to bump it.
Well, it's more of an overall revenue issue. I mean, with solid waste, we haven't increased fees the way we should and it's reflected in the other counties around us where we were the cheapest. That hurt us because we were, I'm fairly sure, getting waste from other counties that was coming in our county.
Well, we've increased the tipping fee.
Just because it was cheaper. Yes, and we did. But we also have operating costs as well. Now, the unseen that solid waste didn't see coming was the opportunity to expand its landfill. We thought that those holes were gone due to zero waste legislation signed by Martin O'Malley coming, you know, when he came out of office. We took advantage of something before it could get switched back. And we're actively doing that so that the county has enough space for, you know, for its waste needs in the future. So those, you know, those things do that. Realistically, where solid waste needs to be is, you know, tipping fee is around $70 a ton. This is just another part of that. We looked at the other counties around us. No other county around us has a free second sticker. They all charge, some of them at 100%, some of them at 50%, whatever, you know, whatever fee structure they have. But nobody allows you to buy one and get another for free.
Well, for some reason or another, somebody at some point in time decided that was the way to go and now, and now we're into it.
It's been that way for years. I'd say that goes back to Ryan, the inception of.
Yeah. I know there was a lot of, you know, discussion when they first even started charging for stickers.
Right.
What kind of an increase in your budget would this increase in this sticker fee actually be?
What was it, Lynn?
It was, I would say, $67,000.
Yeah.
So the.
That's if, is that, is that if everybody who bought a sticker paid for a second $50?
No. Oh, yes.
It's an estimate of if 25% of the permit holders.
Can you go to the microphone?
Could you go to the podium, please? Is the podium closed off?
No, it's working.
It's working? Okay.
Go up, Tim.
Yeah. Lee bailing out on.
Yeah. Just like that.
So the revenue amount is $69,000 and that's based on.
You can bring it down further. It's way up in the air. There you go.
On 92,000 permit holders, if 25% of them purchased a second permit at $30. And the idea of putting it, the second permit at $30 was so that, not to hurt the people that couldn't afford it. So they can still buy a sticker at $60, you know? They just would have to pay for a second.
But I was hearing what you said last year. You didn't want to increase the.
Well, yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to charge extra for a second sticker either.
Right.
I think you're, I think you're just opening it up to, like, we just spent a lot of time talking about trash along the road, you know? And if your, if your landfill operators are doing their job, which I think they are, I don't think you have a problem with people selling the stickers to somebody else. Have you had any, any of that happen that you can, that you can?
I, and I hear what you're saying. So, you know, we've seen an increase in roadside litter all over the county. That's a given. I mean, you're getting calls, we're getting calls, and we try to deal with it as we can. The change that was, is it any more litter now than what it was 10 years ago? Or is it the fact that now we don't have trustees from the detention center that are picking up that litter? So is it any more, any less than what it was? I'm not sure. I mean, I'm not that guy. But, so, you know, in moving in this, I mean, we look at all the counties around us, we look at everything going on around us, and we're just trying to bring Wycomico County into a fee structure that's similar, but still affordable to our own people. Now, and like I say, hearing what you said last year, that you didn't want to raise the tipping fee, I mean, the convenience center permit, so we did. And we didn't propose that fee increase again this year. The only thing we did do is what every other county around us is doing is, I think at Somerset, what, if you buy one, you still, you pay 100%.
You pay $60 for the second in Somerset.
And, and John mentioned just earlier, you know, are our enterprise funds enterprise? Well, we're talking about major expansion that we're having to do so that we can maintain the trash for our county. And without these revenue streams creating a fund balance, we are going to get to a point that they may not be able to maintain their own structure, so.
You've got, you've got $19 million in reserves there.
Looks like $19 million.
Well, but a good chunk of that is required for the shutdown of what we have, and that is not available to be used to purchase or to do anything else. We're taking a big hit on our reserves this year to help fund another cell and to fund the debt to create that cell. And if we don't replenish that through fee increases, we're going to get to a point where we don't have the revenue to support the operations that we have to have to maintain the funding that we need.
That is correct. And on that side, I mean, that's a bigger picture thing, where I'm trying to do things at an operational level that trim a lot of that money back too. One of those is, well, we talked about it some the other day when we, when we spoke about the bringing the dirt from Conley Mill over to the landfill. The potential of that is, hopefully, is $5 to $6 million in saving on the next two cells of the landfill because we have the dirt on site. If I can, if I can achieve that with the $600,000 of hauling money that I had this year, I'd say that's a fairly good payback on my, on my investment. The other side of that, what you'll see this year, we asked for a new dump truck. Part of that new dump truck is to wean ourselves away from private contractors having to haul dirt out of Conley Mill. It's cheaper for us to do it ourselves than it is to hire somebody else to do it for us.
But if we don't think long-term about the fund balance in this fund, when we try to fund for those cells, we will not have the funding available to us. And so if, as a household, we are maintaining the ability of the household to only pay $60 to be able to dump their trash. If you want the convenience to be able to have two of your vehicles to have that permit, then we're charging you half the cost to get a second vehicle. Otherwise, you do not have to pay a dollar more to dump your trash.
I feel I'm being lectured to.
Well, you asked.
Well, I don't know, Joe, all I can do is speak for my household and my wife is not going to let me put the trash in the back of her car.
I know what kind of lectures I'm going to get from the citizens when all this, when all this starts. And, you know, Mark's first, first excuse or reasoning is, was people were reselling their stickers to somebody else and.
It does happen.
I don't believe that.
It doesn't happen.
Not all that much, yeah.
So, so, so when you go into, you know, you say your wife, you know, she got checked the other day, that's a process that we go through, you know, that we actually ask the attendants to write it on a form that they checked the car, must tag number of the car. Every so many vehicles that come in, we random check them because, and the reason that we do this is because we know, because we found others before who are doing exactly the thing, the thing that I'm telling you, you know, they were doing was, they'll buy one and they'll give one to their neighbor or sell it to them or whatever, whatever the case may be. We know that they were swapping stickers.
So what do you do when you find them?
We revoke their sticker.
Do what now?
We revoke the sticker. So it's probably not.
How many have you revoked in the past year?
In the past year, I wouldn't know right off the top of my head. It's not as prevalent as it was, but it does happen.
Just a, just a handful, I would say, in the past year.
Not that big of a problem.
Right. They're pretty well.
That's what it was, they'd be called.
Yeah, they're pretty well-checked in the office.
That makes a difference.
When they.
All right, we're going to have to wrap things up.
Any questions?
Got corrections out there. Any more questions or comments for Mr. Whitelock? Do you have anything else, Mr. Whitelock?
No.
All right, one, one question I did have, I asked you about recycling. Are we back to doing, for recycling yet?
Everything but plastic.
Everything but plastic?
Yes.
So the city's not doing plastic recycling yet?
No.
Okay.
Because we can handle anything that is very labor-intensive because it comes in as a mix.
So you're recycling for the public to know in the city as well?
Canons, cardboard, newspaper.
Glass?
Glass.
Okay.
So the plastic is the only out, unfortunately. There's a lot of plastic in the world.
All right.
So that's, that's where.
Any more questions or comments? All right, thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Whitelock. Ms. Harley, we're probably going to have to schedule more time next year on public works than more than 30 minutes. See y'all. I think we could have talked all day long.
It's kind of crazy, Mark. It seems like plastics is what everyone is paying, is paying attention to.
It is the biggest problem of all.
But there's just not a market for it?
No, there isn't a market for it. It's just that it's a very labor-intensive process because you've got to imagine that the milk jugs come mixed with the detergent bottles and they come mixed with the puffy bottles. All those things have to be separated out by hand. And when you've got millions and, you know, jugs of plastic, that's what you have.
Do you think this is a problem nationwide where it's just difficult to recycle plastics?
You know, it's actually COVID and itself has actually helped the market price of recycling because they became so scarce again because nobody had any labor that now the need.
Ms. Harley, you can bring them in.
Yeah, so they have a need.
Mark, do you know of any, do you know of any private trash removal companies that also do recycle?
No.
Recycle service?
No.
They don't do it because they're not mandated to do it.
Get to that level where we're going to get back to plastics?
Yes.
When we can, when it's, when we can make it affordable, absorb the expenses.
You have wipes in front of you if you want to wipe down before you get seated and whoever your top person is, you can have them sit up there so you don't have to turn around and keep asking them.
Okay.
Is it all right, too?
Yes, please. Otherwise, it's hard to understand.
Yes, sir.
So if you would, introduce yourselves and also introduce our guest in the back.
Warden Ruth Colburn, Wycomico County Department of Corrections, Eric Dickerson, Finance Director, Deputy Director Michael Jameson, and Deputy Director Colonel Thomas Kimble.
Welcome. If you would, pull your mic down. I don't know why they keep throwing them up. What we'd like you to do is go ahead and highlight some of your significant changes and we'll ask questions from there.
Significant is, you will see number 54, capital expenses. That includes a $150,000 mail scanning item which will detect K2 Spice, which is a synthetic marijuana, which we are having a significant problem with, along with most detention facilities, not just in Maryland, but throughout the country. K2 Spice is undetectable by normal drug testing. It can be soaked into paper and then written on. If you go to a place called k2spice.com, you can actually order paper that is pre-soaked. So it's legal to purchase because every time they outlaw one of the ingredients, they change the formula so that it has a different set of ingredients and then they're no, it's no longer illegal. So what we're getting is inmates writing letters on paper that is soaked in K2, which is usually undetectable. If they're, they do a good job, they did a very poor job today and we were able to catch someone. We currently have four pending conspiracy to introduce contraband and place of confinement charges pending, and we will have more. But adding that particular piece of detection equipment would be extremely helpful and to our mailroom for detection and for safety with regard to handling of K2. So that would be one of the major parts of our capital expense.
Sorry, Ms. Colburn, I missed the first thing that you said with the, with K2. This is.
It's a synthetic marijuana, ma'am. It's also called the zombie drug, Kratom. There's a lot of different names for it. It can cause significant reactions, including seizures, excited delirium, a variety of other not-so-good side effects, in addition to the pleasant ones of getting you high.
Can dogs detect that?
Yes. ECI has dogs that can detect it. We did bring them into the facility. However, you have to have a specially-trained dog. The ordinary police canine does not detect it.
Do we have a specially-trained dog for them?
We do not at the detention center.
And how many dogs do we have that we're utilizing for detection of drugs?
We have no dogs at this time.
Sheriff's Department has the dogs. We have no dogs at the corrections center.
Is there a need for one at the corrections department?
In my opinion, yes, sir.
Why didn't you put one in the budget?
I have to make a choice. Also in my budget are two community corrections people. They are classed as correctional officers so that they can actually be multi-used in the case of staff shortage. However, we have gone from having 190 people on community corrections to 525 with eight people supervising them. So I had to make a decision as to what was more important to the budget, and it's more important to the safety of the citizens that we're able to properly supervise those people who are on pre-trial release, pre-trial release electronic monitoring. So I did not put it in the budget this year, sir.
The increase in those, for those positions is partially COVID-related in the fact that judges have been making the decisions as to what people would be incarcerated and less are going in, only the worst of the worst, in, is what I understand it to be. She can state it in a much better way than I can. But that, so those two positions are fully funded. So they are asking for two new positions and we fully funded those two new positions in their budget, as well as then a, an electronic device to scan the mail versus getting a dog.
Does anyone have any questions on these positions?
Warden.
Ms. Holloway?
So do you currently have eight community corrections officers?
I believe we have eight total, but one of them is an assistant, administrative assistant.
Okay. It sounds like your ratio for client to officer has substantially increased.
Yes, sir.
Okay, because before you had four when I did my last.
Yes, sir.
Project with you. So is eight still, is that going to be enough even with the additions?
It's my hope that as COVID slowly passes us by, it will slow down, although this may be the trend for the future. That appears to be the current trend of legislation is moving in that direction, so I may be wrong. It is my hope that that will be sufficient.
Ms. Holloway, do you have a question?
I was going to ask you what your capacity is to the detention center, but I know you're talking about community releases, so what is your capacity as far as physically in the detention center?
Physically, we can hold approximately 500. We're currently sitting at approximately 296 and we have 525 out on pre-trial release. If all of those were locked up, we would be 200 and some bodies over capacity.
Well, you're at half capacity or about 50%.
Approximately, about two-thirds, I would say. Yes, sir.
Okay. Any more questions on that, Mr. Cannon?
What is your external training? Because that's that huge increase there.
Sir, we have, for external training, we have to send new officers to the academy. One of the fallout items that has occurred, not just at Wycomico, however, I've discovered throughout the state, is that correctional officers are retiring in record numbers because of COVID. They are concerned about the congregate housing and the risk of exposure. So we've had a significant number of people retire. We've had a significant number of people leave to go to other correctional facilities who pay more. And we've had a, we've had a small subset who have gone simply to other places that pay more, like Mr. Go Glass.
Mr. Go Glass? Mr. Go Glass?
Yes.
Not even a comparison?
No, there's no comparison. However, the, I think the unintended consequence of some of the, the well-meaning programs, raising the minimum wage and things like that, they are very well-meaning. The unintended consequence is that a lower-risk job is approaching the pay rate of a higher-risk job. So then it becomes a matter of a person choosing what is worth the risk.
That's always been the problem with increasing minimum wage. What's that called? Compression?
Compression.
Yes. So have you found that, that your department has to adjust for that? What is it called compression? What salary compression or what?
It's salary compression. And again, as I stated in the last meeting, is this is another area that we, in our salary survey, will be looking at highly to see if, what needs to be done to make our corrections salaries with market and more attractive to maintain. If I, if I remember correctly as well, one of the other reasons for the increase in training was they, some of the training was shut down, right? During COVID. So they have a backlog of training as well. So training that we thought we were going to accomplish in 2021 didn't get to happen. So we have to budget for, the new officers we're hiring in twenty-two, but as well as the officers we hired in twenty-one all have to go through the training. So it's, it's kind of, not quite, but it's doubled up a little bit. So there's a backlog in that training number.
Makes a big difference, yeah.
It does. And the, I don't know, well, I do, and I'm, I hope, I think most of you do know, the cost of ammunition, and we're required to fire twelve hundred rounds per person per year, the cost of ammunition is absolutely. I've never.
If you can get it, right?
If you can get it. Yes, sir.
Yeah, kidding.
Twelve hundred rounds is a lot.
Yes, and that's per person.
Right.
So it's, it's a lot of rounds. Some of them low light, some of them during daylight, but yes, sir.
The only other thing I had was, I'd made a note and I can't find why I made the note, but there were some large revenue losses?
So I, I took those out. And so at this point in time, until we know, and a lot of those revenue losses are related to inmates going out to help at other locations.
Okay.
Until we know that we can safely do that with COVID, I took those revenues out. I did backfill that with American Rescue. So on the American Rescue tab, you'll see that there is money backfilled because of lost revenue was one of the definitions of American Rescue. So it is, it's backfilled in the American Rescue line. It is not in those lines because at this point in time, we don't know when. Now, hearing from Mark, there's a possibility that they could start putting some out on the roads again, but I didn't want to count on that and put that in the budget.
Sounds responsible. I'm okay with that.
What's trending across the country is police officers leaving in record numbers doing, due to state legislation, federal legislation. And I would assume that it's also affecting the Department of Corrections as well. Corrections officers are affected by a lot of the same legislation. So what are we doing to recruit and retain?
We are always actively recruiting. We have a rolling application period. We try to dress up corrections the best that we can, but you can't make corrections glamorous. So we do our best.
Joe and I and Levin and, Levin were there the other day. I got the feeling that the employees, I wanna say enjoy their job and the camaraderie that was there. So, I mean, that was obvious. I know it's not one hundred percent perfect, but everyone seemed to enjoy being there. I know it's a tough job. It's difficult. But whatever you gotta do to recruit and retain, we're here for you.
I appreciate that, sir, very much.
I certainly would've been there, but I had another engagement, so I apologize for that.
It's all right, sir.
And I missed that because we were stuck there because they were over an hour late.
Ms. Colburn, I had a question on the, the medical hospital.
Yes, ma'am.
And is that the, that's the inmate billing? Okay. And do all of the inmates, do they receive priority partners, health insurance?
Upon release. We have.
Not in, when they're in there?
When they're in there, no, ma'am. They're not qual, not allowed to have it unless they're hospitalized for over twenty-four hours in the hospital, then they're eligible for Medicaid.
The number did go up. We are working with our, our partner who provides our health, our healthcare for our inmates to provide some additional services for the type of people that are in the depart, are in our facility at this point in time. So we, we felt that those were appropriate things to add on to our contract to help with the population that we're seeing.
Our population is trending toward being more physically ill and significantly more mentally ill, with significant more opioid or, and/or other drug dependencies.
And the reason I ask is because the.
You speak into the.
The reason I ask is the reimbursement rate has gone up for those, those morbid, comorbidities. And so I was wondering if there's something with our medical billing. We have it with EMS. We have it with detentions. We have it with possibly the nursing home. If we look at auditing those, what we're coding for or?
Absolutely. I'm open for that. To my knowledge, we are not allowed, once they are an inmate at the correctional facility, we are not allowed to access any type of medical reimbursement until after they've been admitted for twenty-four hours.
Really?
Correct.
Any more questions, Mr. Cannon?
I'd just say we appreciate your, the work that you're doing. You don't get a lot of limelight, which probably is a really great thing, actually. But I don't think people can possibly comprehend exactly, you know, the degree of work that you have to do just to keep things smooth and running steadily day-to-day.
My staff are, are very dedicated, professional, and they are committed to the safety of Wycomico County.
Sure. And you have, you have challenges every day that I don't think the public in general recognizes. So thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you all.
And is there anything else you wanna add?
I just wanna thank all of you for your support for the detention center and our staff. We very much appreciate it.
And we appreciate the staff, too. So, that said, any more questions? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'll stay safe out there. Get this started. What's that? Oh, he's stuck out the door.
The herding cats.
I thought he was gonna sit down.
She brought in lunch last week a little bit early.
Oh.
And we.
Took a break, a five-minute break.
We're not done.
I'm sure it was all the guys, right?
We really should've scheduled a twenty-five-minute break.
Oh, she poked into? Okay.
Her diabetes was kicking in.
Yeah.
Her blood sugar was low.
I get really testy when I'm hungry.
Yeah, they had a.
Like I can't even focus.
Lady who was at the service on yesterday who passed out, standing outside.
Is that what the crew went?
Yeah, exactly. And she just, I looked at her and next thing I knew, she was down on the pavement. I was like, oh, my God. And so they said that her sugar level was low, so I guess she hadn't had enough to eat. Yeah, yeah.
I've seen people with a blood sugar of twenty-five talking to you, and I've seen them with blood sugar twenty-five unconscious.
Really?
Yes.
That's amazing.
It depends on the person. Okay, let's get started. If you would, introduce yourself and I guess everybody's here at the table with you.
Sure, I'll be happy to. Lori Carter, I'm the Planning Director, but at this moment, I'm interim, I guess, for the Local Management Board. I have with me today Dawn Shear, who is the Grants Coordinator, and also the Co-Chair of the Local Management Board, Dr. George Whitehead.
Okay, thank you. And we do appreciate you taking over the Local Management Board on a temporary basis. So you're doing a great job and thank you for that extra work. So if you would, go ahead and highlight. One of you can do it if you don't want.
Sure, most definitely. I have someone who is very capable here, who's been working directly with the grants, and that is Dawn. So I'm gonna have her just to provide an overview.
Okay.
Take my mask off?
Yes.
So the majority of our budget that is.
Do you need a mic?
Yeah, sorry.
That one just turned to her.
The majority?
Yeah, bring it closer.
Very short. The majority of our budget that comes from the GOCCP under the Community Partnership Agreement, funds our board support, and so that's all the administrative part that actually makes things run, the staff in there. And then when we kinda move that out, that's about two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, but it's broken down into all the salaries and office supplies and benefits. So if we set that aside, then what we're looking at, and I'm not sure if we have the same page numbers, but on page, my page three, are our grant programs. So we have trauma-informed care that right now goes to the Community Behavioral Health Navigation, which right now goes to Lead for Life, Youth Homelessness, which currently goes to the Phoenix Youth Project. Family Education goes to Shore Family Grace, and then Child Hunger, which funds mobile meals. And that's the majority of it. I say right now because the way our procurement works and the way it's going to happen for this next year is all of those will be put out for bid again.
So the ones that you mentioned, are they gonna be part of Local Management Board from here on out?
Every year, the state requires that we put in the strategies and justify what's going on. So all I can say is that this year, they are included in the application. We have our first round of questions that came on Friday, and we have to get back to answer those questions through this Friday. We should know the information of what's, the state is willing to fund by May tenth or twelfth.
So they're, they're going to be telling us what they are going to reimburse, what's already been funded? Or are they reimbursing a hundred percent of what this grant allocation is?
So when we're talking about fiscal year 2022, right?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was back, I was.
Go backwards. I thought so.
We have, we have zeros in MUNIS. There's no actual.
So the issue is, is that because these are grants, the grant number has changes every year. And so Local Management Board is very hard to show in MUNIS because the problem is, is the grant number changes. So those last five numbers, the project number, changes every fiscal year. So these all start with a twenty-two. All of the grants for twenty-one start with a twenty-one, and so it would be very, it's, the system, MUNIS does not allow me to show twenty-one and twenty-two side by side.
So can you have here with 2020, what is, what was budgeted and what was actually?
So we can work to get you those numbers, but the problem is, is they don't line up with MUNIS account numbers. The problem is, is the MUNIS account number has a twenty to start it for fiscal twenty, has a twenty-one to start it for fiscal twenty-one, and has a twenty-two to start it for fiscal twenty-two. That's the reason why you don't see numbers in here for the other years because of the MUNIS numbering structure.
They've all been, but.
They have happened.
The state has all.
Yes.
They have paid for all of the grant funding, because I know that was an issue in the past, was that we had allocated money, money to the, to the different grantees, I guess, and the state did not compensate the county for that.
My understanding is, is that the, the process has changed such that we don't allocate to anybody else until we know what we're getting allocated.
That that is correct. Okay.
So that was an issue in the past, correct? Okay.
So we're now waiting for the information from the state to award then to the sub-receipients.
So, but in previous years, there was that difference? Okay.
So do you have a list of the grant recipients that you just mentioned? Or is that listed in the budget?
It is not listed in the budget, but we can get you that information.
If you would, please.
I only know they're in the budget because I recognize the numbers, which you wouldn't know of the grant numbers.
So that's how you ran it off, by looking at the numbers?
She knows the numbers, which is amazing to me. I know.
So what, what we will, what Dawn and I will put together is what those last three, last five numbers mean. So if it has the two-two, two-two F-two, we'll give you a description of what that means. And so then you could understand what that means in here. We'll get you that information.
And then can you, can you just touch on some of the positions? I know that that department has grown quite a bit. And I know the, the local care coordinator, correct, they are funded by the state.
Yes, it's a full reimbursement.
The Local Management Board Director that is a separate position.
Director is the only position that gets a funding from the general fund.
Okay.
Every other position is fully grant-funded.
Grant-funded, a hundred percent.
Okay, so the grant coordinator and.
All of those positions are a hundred percent funded by the grants that we receive from the state. The only position is the director position gets a portion of its funding from the, the general fund.
From what I have, Mr. Hitchens says that the county's appropriation to local management remained at sixty-eight thousand five hundred. And that's the total appropriation.
That's the total appropriation. Everything else would be coming from the grant.
So that'd be great when we see how much, when we get that, those actuals.
I'd like to see that, too.
Was actually.
Look who's here.
Would you like?
I did wanna answer the question that everything is eventually reimbursed by the state. The challenge is, is if we ever get behind on our reports or they disagree, then they don't send those, the checks in advance. So actually, the way they pay us is they give us four months and then three months, three months and two months for the twelve months. So if we are on top of everything, then we'll get the money in advance.
Then the, the Early Childhood Council, I don't see anything on the Local Management Board under that.
So that is, if you go to page three and read down two-two-two CC, CC is the, kinda for childcare. It's probably the eighth one down, and then go over, it's twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a three-year grant, twenty-five thousand dollars for each of the years.
And that, that goes to the salary of the Local Management Board?
No, there's no salary in it. This is the first year in, the first year there was no indirect that was specific to assist the, the department for actually doing anything. Now there's a couple thousand dollars of indirect. The rest of it is all specific to support early childhood educators and families in the community. For instance, we cover some trainings for people that are going to the Childcare Resource and Referral Center for the childcare programs.
Is that for just community childcare providers or?
For new providers, if they wanna get into it initially, that first forty-five-hour training, as well as for their professional development.
Okay. Of, of community childcare providers, right?
Yep, it can be in centers or homes, but it's, you know, here in Wycomico County.
All right, you wanna continue, Ms. Shear?
Yep. So then the, so we talked about the general Community Partnership Agreement grants that I was referring to. And I covered all of those. And then we started to talk about the Maryland State Department of Education grants. So the first one would be that twenty-five thousand dollars. The second one is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for promoting positive outcomes for infants and toddlers, and that's already been awarded to us. The third and final one is the Healthy Families Grant, which the majority of that goes to the Health Department, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand. We are expecting to receive, to go to the Health Department, and then about eight thousand stays and funds part of the director's salary.
All right, any questions on that? Ms. Harley?
So you mentioned that all the employees in that department, and how many do you have? How many?
Total of three.
Great, okay.
Actually, two, I'm sorry, two. And then there's one that is hired by cares for the rental assistance program, who's inside of that office.
So the only one that's funded through the general fund is the director?
Correct.
Okay. So are the other employees contract employees or are they permanent county employees?
So I, I believe they are, if the, if we would not receive the grant, we would not have the funding for those positions. They receive the benefits of the county, but they, if the grant ends, then the funding ends for those positions. So, so the position would no longer be funded and paid for.
Does the county then, are we responsible for all the benefits for those positions?
Well, the benefits are, well, well, and that's funded in these grants. Again, the only, the only transfer from the general fund and the only place these people are charged is here. The only transfer is for the director position type.
So if the grant ends.
The grant ends, so does the position.
So their employment's terminated, we don't have to find somewhere else for them?
If we don't plan on accepting the funds, it's all actually contingent upon whether or not, if the county wants to continue with the Department of Justice and Department of, what's the other one that we work with? Maryland, yes, Maryland Department of State of Education. So if that's the will or the decision of the council, if they want to proceed with the programs and what they actually provide, then that's something you would have to decide upon.
I'm just curious, is, is it typical for a local management board to have MSDE grants? I mean, doesn't that typically go to our public school system?
So Maryland State Department of Education requires that we take the Healthy Families Grant. Years ago, it used to be under Governor's Office for Children. We are the applicant. They actually give us the amount that they're willing to award us, and then as long as we do a pretty good job, it flows through us to a local vendor. The other two applications, the $25,000 that we call for WEC, at the state level, they call it for ECAC, because it's the Early Childhood Advisory Committee, goes to a wide variety of different lead agencies. In Somerset County, it is the Board of Education.
Yeah, that's why I've only ever saw it with the Board of Ed. I just don't want to get into a position where we're competing with our public school system.
I did inquire, since I wasn't here then, I did inquire, and what I was told was that our Board of Education chose not to apply. I wasn't here then, so I wasn't involved, I apologize, but that's the answer I have. Now, the ECAC, though, that $25,000, all of that is reserved, a $25,000 or close to that, one for each of the 24 jurisdictions in the state of Maryland. So basically, if you don't take it, you don't take it. Now, the other, the $130,000, the promoting positive outcomes for infant toddlers was competitive, and that was, the, no one else in the county was going to apply for it. So we didn't have to apply for it, but it wouldn't be here if we hadn't.
Okay, and the Board of Ed, I mean, the public school system is not interested in applying for those? Okay.
I'd only say, it sounds like we're keeping things on track here, which I'm really glad to see. Ms. Carter, I don't know how many departments you're running now, but this is, you seem to have your hands in quite a bit. We appreciate it. And I would take the opportunity also to thank Mr. Whitehead.
Yes.
This gentleman is probably in every organization in Wycomico County. There's not an event I go to where, I just saw you last week, at the Field of the Half. I don't think there's any organization in this county that you don't participate in one way or the other, and I really appreciate what you, what you do. Yeah.
And, and you know, the quality of life in Wycomico County is really dependent on, on people like Mr. Whitehead and people that volunteer their time for these organizations. I wish we had a whole lot more people like you. And, and I know all of us in this room do our own share of volunteering, and our activity is very high, but we need more people in Wycomico.
Yes, he's been at this for, how long, George? How long have you been at this?
Off and on.
Off and on for quite some time. When the organization first started, when I first moved here, Mr. Whitehead was at the helm of it then, and then to see that, I'm looking at him again, 34 years later, he's still here. So it's to see it, you know, he has definitely been actually committed, and.
I appreciate that you voted to put me back on.
What's that?
I appreciate you, I appreciate you voting to put me back on.
Yes.
I was off for a few years in there while we were going through some leadership change and.
Right, well, we're glad you took an interest.
I wanted to say this, that when I look at some of the opportunities moving forward, I would like to say that hopefully, that whoever is sitting at this desk next year will be able to meet with you all, at least on a semi-annual or whatever. I think that's going to be very important. I would also see this as an opportunity, as what you said, that when people are looking at Wycomico County to come here for business or whatever, they're going to look at how healthy our community is. And I see this agency as being a part of the county, as a part of that solution. So I do thank you for this opportunity to be able to come and at least to have that type of talk, and so that you all know exactly what's going on with the local management board and how that works. Because you're going to get people, you may receive a call that says, "Mr. Holloway, I have a child, and I don't know what to do with him." You know, you never know what that may be, and you may say, "Call the local management board." There's an array of programs that's there that could assist with that, so.
And people don't know about it.
And people don't know about it. So that's one of the things that we have talked about. We're working on a marketing initiative and how that's going to be able to get out to our citizens, because they need to know.
I've, I've got a couple of small questions before we move on. I was looking at training, we had emergency services in there earlier, and their budget for training was 6,500, and I'm looking at training for local management for 5,500, and emergency services has a lot more employees, so I was just wondering what the difference was?
It's under the F2 grant, the 222 F2.
I can't hear you.
It's under the, I'm, I'm giving them information.
Okay.
So that they know.
I don't know if they hear you.
It's under the F2?
Yes. It says Training External, 5486.
5486, so do you love these numbers here?
So the, right now, we wrote in both, kind of what you would consider internal and external trainings. Obviously, the budget hasn't been approved from the state yet. All of that is funded through that Community Partnership Agreement. Generally, what has been attended in the past, this, this year is a little different. They've done, or we staff have done online trainings, attended the Zero to Three Conference, a no harm reduction training online. In the past, there were also some conferences that, that staff attended, specific to whatever were the initiatives. Teen Court, that, that initiative, which I know isn't going on now, was one of the last big conferences that I believe the staff attended in looking at trying to reengage the law enforcement.
Okay. I know that online training can be expensive, but with COVID changing now, and conferences are opening back up, so we won't have to worry about doing a whole lot of online training. Does anybody have any questions or comments on that? All right, I made a note too of office supply, $7,000 seems like a lot. What are we doing there?
So the Community Partnership Agreement is this big chunk of money, and we have to draft it to go to the state, and then they come back and change everything. I was here for the end of that in October. We actually expect some of those numbers to change. We put them almost in.
Up, down?
Up, that will probably go down, because we will figure out something else that needs to be spent. They may say that, actually, in terms of training, we're, we're going to have at least one or two new positions, so they'll need to go through the results-based accountability training. So you know how it is, money needs to be shifted around.
Okay. Any questions on that? And then right now, one last one for me on that. Local travel, I know emergency services had that as well. What do you do for local travel?
I believe local travel is, is just our gas, is my understanding, and then very limited if we ever have, although we didn't have any this year, mileage, where if staff are going in two different directions at once, and that has to be approved. But I believe it's just gas, and that is actually, for this year, is underspent, because we hardly go anywhere.
Okay, because it looked like it was about the same amount. I think it was emergency services as well. I guess, Ms. Olin, you can answer this. I'm surprised Mr. Canada didn't ask about it, but vehicle expenses.
So which line item are you?
There were several, I believe.
So again, they have a vehicle to, again, these are all estimates at this point in time based on the submission to the state. Those are all under the F2, which I believe is kind of our operate, our administrative expenses that are allowed to be reimbursed. It's, it's a matter of the information and what we spend administratively. As I said, we will get you a list of what the different project numbers mean, and I can, we can work on summarizing it based on those project numbers, if you would like.
Okay. Do you wonder if it should fall under the enterprise?
Well, the, the difference is, is, again, the fuel does not, will not fall under enterprise. I mean, you have to pay for fuel. The, I would have to look to see what we have spent in the past on maintenance, on vehicle, and it could be that, so I would have to look.
Okay.
And the enterprise, we get a separate invoice that we code each month and turn into finance, so there's a small portion of, I know that's a very large contract, but that covers our one car. So that actually gets paid out of the grant and isn't under.
I see fuel, like $1,400.
Well, and again, most of their things are on the road, and they are going out to different things, so it's not like they're sitting in the office, not doing anything. It is, they, that one car is on the road.
Are you reimbursing employees for mileage?
Well, most, she said most of what they're doing is with the car that they have.
With the one car, right. I was wondering if there were any expenses for employees coming back.
This year, I had not seen any expenses, of course. It's COVID. I guess prior years, they were limited, where staff were using it in county, and the director had to go across the bridge for a meeting, and so they had to figure out who was going to go where. I think it was just a couple hundred dollars over the span of a whole year.
It was very limited.
Yeah.
All right, any more questions on this? Do you have anything else to add?
No. Mr. Whitehead, do you have anything to say as far as board? That you want the council to know?
If you know the process that we went through this past year, oh, okay, thanks.
Yes.
I don't know if you know the process we went through this year, but I do want to share that with you. It was really an attempt in terms of creating a strategic plan, which we're obligated to do, and we hired Dues to help us with that. And I think we got a lot of involvement from various stakeholders who may not have been involved before, because we ended up with a community group who really had lots of good information for us. And so if you look at it, you'll see some of the new initiatives, the workforce initiative and others, they really came out of that process. So I do want you to know that there was an attempt to really reach out to wide, wide stakeholders in our community to create the plan that we're moving forward on.
Okay.
Dr. Whitehead, is that on, is that on the website, on the local management board website? Is it on the website?
Yes.
It's on the website?
Thanks.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, one of the things in, in terms of previous conversation that came up was we having all of these things available, but people not knowing about it. So one of the things that we're trying to do is to improve communication, and I think that's what we're going to try and do going forward now.
Okay, sounds like a plan. Anything else? All right, thank you all very much.
Thank you.
And we'll be back in touch with you. It was nice meeting with you all today.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Next on the agenda is the administration. Thank you, Dawn.
I, I guess the question for you guys is, we met with you at the beginning.
Right.
What additional questions have been generated? Otherwise, we don't have anything additional to add at the moment.
Ms. Harley, did you get follow-up questions on this?
I had a couple, just.
Yes, can you talk into the mic? How's it feel? You always tell them Joe or somebody talking to the mic?
So the last administrative session we had, I kind of felt like we were cut short because we had to get the next work session started. So there's a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, and I, I just didn't. So for community promotions, it looks like the funding is being reduced by $5,000. Are we not renewing any subscriptions, or what is the situation there?
Can I get back to you on that one? Because that one is not striking a bell as to exactly what the change is. I will.
Okay.
Answer that one. The only other one that I have would be for Human Resources. We didn't bring them in for a budget session, but it looks like their operating budget is increasing 48%.
Who's that?
Human Resources.
HR.
So one of the, yeah, let me, let me write this note down so that I don't forget to respond on the community promotions. Give me one second. I, I don't think it's a specific subscription on the community promotions, but let me check. But I think what, on that one, is it's just been our run rate as to what we've been spending. So we've been spending less than $35,000 to, so to save money, we reduced it to 30. But let me verify that for sure. So 01, 01, 006. On, on HR, you will note on the Schedule F, we are adding a benefits, where are they? Benefit Specialist at $43,096. So, so we're adding a position down there, partly to learn the benefits position that we have with one of our current employees, who is a long-term employee, who has not announced a retirement, but we don't have any cross-training in that area, as well as we, with the constant turnover of employees, we need to have more than one employee who knows our benefits area. And so a majority of the increase in HR is due to adding the position and then the associated benefits associated with that position. And then some of the long-term employees with, with retirements has increased our cost with some of our external entities that we have to pay for, like C-Biz and that kind of stuff. So those, those two things are the main increases for HR.
How many employees are in HR?
There are currently five, and so we're looking to add a sixth.
Is there room down there?
Yes.
With HR, there is a big increase in department unique contract services?
So that is specifically the contracts related to like C-Biz and that kind of stuff. I added one. They had not budgeted previously for one of their contracts, and I can't remember which it was, and so it has created a hardship by not having it budgeted in there. Instead of creating a separate line for each individual contract, it is in the, the total.
Okay.
So I have one follow-up question on the community promotions for you that I will get back, but I believe it is a run rate thing, not a specific cut.
Civic Center, I noticed that you have $100,000 for Capitol Furniture. It's in the Capitol Less Than $5,000 line item.
So it, it's not one specific thing for, so it's like replacing tables and chairs and that kind of stuff. So it's, it's, it is less than $5,000 per item.
Right.
But it is, a lot of items are, and I believe, if I'm remembering correctly, let me check before I say anything. I think it is on the funding list. So yes, we're funding that $100,000 with $100,000 in the American Rescue. So they have lost revenue at the Civic Center due to American Rescue, so yes, we're going to give them that $100,000 to be able to then buy equipment that they haven't been able to buy because of lost revenue.
Speaking of revenue, what are our income tax revenue, what is that looking like?
So we upped our projection, we upped the number from fiscal night, or fiscal 21 to fiscal 22. The number that we have put in is $56,400, and the. And the, I think the number, give me one second to get to the right page. I want to say it was 55, 54 in '21. Give me one second.
So that's better than what they were originally projecting.
So yeah, income, 54 is the '21 adopted budget. We are putting in at 56,400. We have run higher than every other quarter that we've ever received, or every other receipt. I'm waiting for the May receipt. April, we don't receive anything. So, but all of our numbers have come in higher than previous years.
Are you thinking that we may eventually see the results of the pandemic when everything's shut down? We haven't seen that yet. Are you thinking it's going to happen in fiscal year '22?
So right now, the way we are projecting is that the results of the pandemic seem to be mitigated at this moment by unemployment. Unemployment is still taxable. So, and a lot of the positions that were lost were not positions that were paying a whole lot in income taxes. People that had, so the income tax number has held up better than people had expected. So that is why we did not take a reduction in that number for fiscal '22.
Does that answer your questions? Mr. Cannon?
Tourism, we never met with recreation parks and tourism. There were some questions on tourism as far as their one-time operating and their capital expenses, which seemed extremely high.
So tourism, 100% self-funded through the hotel motel tax. Some of their expenses, and I would, let me see if I remember what's.
I don't need it today.
Okay, I do remember that we put some specific things in there to, let me get you the detail of that capital other and the one-time expense. I don't want to remember them wrong.
Just make a note, I don't need it today. It'll be fine.
Might have it in here, give me one second.
You're talking to the floor.
So the $80,000 one-time expense is a marketing study that we would like to contract for to allow an outside company to say, what is the most, what are the features of Wacomiko County that we should be advertising and promoting outside our area to try to get people to come and stay in Wacomiko?
When you say stay, are you talking about moving here?
Again, this is the tourism department, so this is intending to try to generate tourism dollars of, so people coming to use our hotels, use our restaurants, use our attractions here in town. So that's what that $80,000 is for. The other, the $325,000, tourism is planning to contribute to a lighting project out at Henry S. Parker for $325,000.
A lighting project at Henry Parker for the ball fields?
Yes. And so those ball fields are a big tourism generator with all the, all the tournaments that we bring in on the weekends and through the summer. So tourism is going to use some of their fund balance to upgrade our park, looking at fields seven and eight that do not have lights on them currently. And then our locals will have the benefit to be able to use those during the week and it won't be costing, out of local taxpayer dollars, it'll be paid out of the revenue that is coming from tourism. So those are the two major numbers and both of those are being funded through the fund balance that has been generated at tourism.
Right, and I guess that's really my, part of my, to continue with that, is that an unsettling pattern when you see that they're, that they're increasing so astronomically from the prior year fund balance?
Yeah, it was a strategic plan of, again, there is a tourism and civic center board that it has been determined that it is, it is time to utilize that fund balance to try to help our tourism in the county. And so that is, those have been strategically planned to spend those dollars.
Because in some instances, you might think they're bleeding out, but you're saying, no, this is just part of the plan.
It's part of, it's part of the plan to strategically use the assets that we have and upgrade the assets that we have in, so upgrade our park to benefit our tourism to then continue to generate additional revenue.
That's good planning. Now, with the Civic Center, I'm assuming it's probably a little bit different possibly because the Civic Center, I think, is under a huge crunch.
So again, this is, this is just tourism dollars. So this is.
I understand.
Right.
But then Civic Center, you see a similar circumstance, whereas there's a lot of borrowing from prior year.
Now, they have, they do have restoration funding and it is mandated by, so the hotel motel tax that, 6% is charged on when you stay in a hotel in Wacomiko County. 4% of it goes to tourism. 1% goes to fund the zoo. And that's mandated by state law. And 1% goes to the Civic Center for restoration projects. So again, we're strategically using the fund balance to help maintain the facility that's there. It is not intended to be used for operating and that's the reason why we have to come for an appropriation and that's the reason why it's not an enterprise fund any longer. But we're strategically using the money that has been generated by this hotel motel tax to help maintain and upgrade the facility that's there. And so again, it has been strategically determined that those are the right areas to spend that money on.
All right. We said at the last meeting when you were here, I would repeat it again, it's terribly refreshing to be able to have this type of open communication transparency between, between the executive and legislative branch of government. It's how government is really supposed to run and I think we're being, we're much more efficient than we've been before. Big difference than it was past few years.
And again, if you come up with any additional questions between now and when you want to adopt, if something, I would appreciate the ability to answer any of those questions so that you guys understand this budget better and understand why we put in the numbers that we put in.
We're, excuse me, we're having the budget recap on the 21st. I'm not sure if you're aware of that.
Yes, and my intention was to be here for that, to again, answer any questions that have come up. Because again, if I can explain why we put those in there, it benefits everybody.
Ms. Owen, getting back to the ball fields and spending that tourism money, I know there was some discussion of expanding, maybe putting up, this was Mr. Culver's thinking at the time, and they were thinking about expanding the fields, putting more baseball fields up or softball fields up. Is that still on the radar screen?
So at this point in time, the land that is there for Henry S. Parker is 100% utilized. There is no, no more land. We, when we expanded those fields, I'm going back in time, but we originally looked, again, looked at the Nailor Mill Forest, which was owned by the city. Ultimately, that property became what it was.
Right, we remember what happened there.
And then we did look at additional piece of property on the other side of the, there's that road with a couple houses on it. We looked at some property there, but there is actually a major swale and it made it, and that's how we ended up with the fields where we have them.
Sure.
We made the decision to eliminate our rectangle fields and go with what the strength was, which is diamond fields. And that is where we have been able to draw, and to have an eight-field complex draws more tournaments than having a four-field complex.
Right, so they don't have to travel all over the county.
Correct. Connolly Mill, which abuts actually the back of Henry S. Parker, has some intriguing concepts, but it is wooded all back there. There is a major, that major swale also goes through there as well. And to connect those two would cost a significant amount of money to actually have vehicle traffic to go over. But it does still lend itself to being very close and very advantageous to wrecking parks. I do not believe at this point in time, we're looking at more fields at least budding Henry S. Parker.
Right, so the only option would be looking at a different location.
Correct. But Connolly Mill, the front side of Connolly Mill behind the burrow pits could be that location, but it also could be a location for a lot of other things.
Recreation things, right.
Recreational things that our county either has a little bit of or does not have.
I don't think we ever did get a cost analysis as to why a couple of years ago, Connolly Mill was, had to be, had to be, I wouldn't say purchased, had to be accepted in order to help us with the landfill. And it has flipped 180 now.
Yes.
Whereas it is not cost-efficient. And I really don't, I don't think we've received those numbers yet. So if we could maybe work towards that once we get through the budget.
So I believe, we are still taking the, I believe the land that they're looking to change, the POS, is not the stuff that the landfill is using. It is the stuff behind it. It is, it's two separate parts of that overall property. We are using those borrow, we are using those pits to help us and it is still saving us money. I just don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay.
Because we do not have to buy, yes, we have to truck it, but we don't have to buy it. And we would have to buy an truck if we were, didn't have it for ourselves.
Understood, but I believe in a prior meeting, I was led to believe that it was not being as cost-efficient as we had originally anticipated and that's why we were supposed to be looking at the pots property, which.
I thought the same thing.
The, it is cheaper to have it next door than to have to truck it, but it's still cheaper to have it than not.
Yep. Any more questions or comments? Well, Ms. Owen, you did a good job today. It seems like you're in your element with finance now. We're really appreciative of what you do and assisting with this budget session. So you will be here on the 21st?
Yes.
Okay. Any more questions, comments?
I have one.
Ms. Harley.
And actually, I think this came from a council member who's not here. Can you just give us a rundown on mosquito control? Just tell us a little bit about the department, where the funding's going.
So we have a Department of Mosquito Control. My understanding of the department, and this is one that I don't have as much knowledge as other departments. So we charge neighborhoods to have individual properties, homeowners' properties, like if you're in a homeowners' association, your homeowners' association can choose to have your property sprayed for mosquitoes and your neighborhood to be sprayed for mosquitoes. And then I believe we're also then spraying some of the, our own properties as well to control the mosquito population. So we have a revenue source by charging homeowners that want extra spraying. And then we have other areas that we spray as well.
Citizens contact the county to request this mosquito spraying?
I will have to find out about that.
Great, are we done? All right, I thank everyone for being here today. Mr. Posoda, thank you and the staff for helping us out with this and look forward to meeting with you again. That said, thank you, everyone.